I will now call the Better Streets Commission meeting for Thursday, October tenth, twenty twenty four to order.
Thank you for bringing us this evening for the October tenth, twenty twenty four, Montesereno, Better Streets Commission Regular Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules specific to the commission. Staff and members of the public successfully participate in this meeting. For today's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with the Better Streets Commission Regular Meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat or raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a commissioner member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the chair and unable to speak to the commission. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. And lastly, when we're not all in the same room, all the votes in the meeting must be taken by roll call.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Commissioner Villalala?
Here.
Commissioner Nasarova is out today. Commissioner Shapin?
Here.
Commissioner White, sorry.
Here.
And Chair Lawler, President. Thank you. Are there any changes to the orders of the day? I believe you want to move an item, right?
Okay, we moved the Bruce item number two up to number one for the presentations tonight, as most people here for Bruce Avenue.
Absolutely. Are you? Is everyone okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
This is number three. Yeah, so.
We're moving this to number one?
Thank you.
We're moving it to number one, correct? Correct. Okay. All right. Are there any oral communications? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda today? Anyone on one? No hands are raised? No? Okay. Any written communications? Did you receive anything? Any other items?
No other written communication.
That's okay. Then we will move on to item three, request for speed humps on Bruce Avenue. Report, please.
Thank you, Chair Lawler. The city was, uh, or Miss Amanda, I want to, her name, I can't pronounce her, Jordana? Okay, thank you. Approached the city a few weeks back about the interest of installing speed humps along Bruce Avenue. Upon looking into this, this request has come before the city before. And I may have put some of that information put in here, if not, it was about, I think, five years ago, four or five years ago. This was brought, twenty-one, April twenty-one. This request was brought before the council and the vote on that date, as far as the immediate residents on Bruce Avenue, was fifty-eight percent voted yes for that, but it required a sixty-seven percent vote, and it was voted down at that time. But it has been, for our traffic calming policy, after two years, it can come back, so it is back here for us to discuss before I'm able to take this to council to see if they're interested in it. So we thought we'd bring that here tonight. Amanda was able to get numerous residents to sign off on the approval of this. We had two, two negative and overwhelmingly positive on the installing speed humps on the avenue. For our traffic calming policy, which I believe this committee years ago had a role in that, having this put together, we'd have to go through certain requirements and evaluations to make sure, maybe a speed study out there to look at speeds, to make sure they hit certain speed requirements. However, with the interest in the local residents, we thought we'd bring that tonight, but then come tonight and speak to you about the possibility of installing those. I did get a phone call from a resident who was against putting this speed humps in and thought that it wasn't a speeding issue along the street. But a few people I've spoke to in favor of say there is speeding issues that they'd like to address, so I'm booking this night that some of those folks will address the committee tonight and let you know what they think.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to ask questions first, or would you like to hear our guests speak first? Do you have any questions? Okay.
I have a question. It is, has a, a measure been done of the speed of cars on the street?
We've not gone to that since yet. No, we're just at a preliminary phase.
Okay. Sorry, may I interject? There was a speed thing on our street for a week.
Yeah, that's from the police department, not from the, of course, yeah. But I think one was done, like, the first time I came. I believe so, and and there was enough speeding that we went ahead and, right, otherwise we would have figured it to go to that one, yes.
Okay, all right then. I would like to, um, hold on to the public comments.
Three minutes.
Hi, Amanda Giordano, this is my son Grayson. He wanted just two seconds to say a few things.
I'm Grayson.
I'm Grayson.
Go ahead.
So, do you guys have kids?
Yes.
You know, they like to ride bikes, scooters, and all of that. But if people are speeding on your street, that increases the chance of them getting severely injured.
So, we have been here for about seven years, and we've been on the street, and the problem has persistently gotten worse. There is quite a bit of speeding. We, and completing this survey and the petition, I have learned that there's quite a history on Bruce, that we didn't have stop signs. They put in a stop sign. That did help for a moment in time. The problem's gotten significantly worse. I've tried speaking with the head of school, as during the school year, it tends to be the school parents, and in the summer, this is our beach traffic. People on ways are bypassing Seventeen and Winchester, and they're using Bruce Avenue and Poppy as their bypass for it, and are using quite excessive speeds, and not even stopping at the stop signs. So, we are petitioning. We know there was a petition out for sidewalks and streetlights at one point. Neither of those got passed or approved on our street. We're looking for a solution at this point to fix the problem, because we do have kids. We specifically moved, my husband is from here, went to high school here, I'm from the area, and we moved to this neighborhood specifically so my kids could ride around the block and feel safe. And we could be confident that they would not endure any injuries from hair, people, adults speeding down the street. So, we are here to petition. We're open to ideas. This is the one that hadn't been explored in a while, so that's why we're here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm David Collins. I lived on Bruce Avenue for twenty-six years, and I can ensure this group that there is a speeding problem on Bruce Avenue. It's a speedway. It's a natural acceleration street. A couple of points. The, the vote that was taken five years ago, is it standard practice to require a two-thirds majority to pass something?
It is under this policy, sorry.
Which policy?
The traffic calming policy.
So, that's always the case. It's, that, that's always applied?
And it's typically fairly easy to achieve.
To what?
In my experience, it's been fairly easily to achieve a two-thirds.
Okay, so, and also I want to point out that that vote was not to permanently install speed humps as opposed to bumps. It was to test it. Is that your understanding?
I was not your.
Okay, well, it was to test. It was meant to be a test, which we all thought would be a good idea. Why not test it? The other point I want to make is, I contacted the city of Los Gatos, which, as you may know, has, has built several speed humps on several streets. I, I think it's four or five now. You probably know about this. And I asked them for their engineering reports on that, and the follow-up reports, and they've been very effective. I, I don't know if you've seen those reports. If you don't, I can send them to you, but they've been not only effective in reducing the speed on the street, but probably more importantly, the people who live on the street were very happy with them. And this is documented. So, I suggest that you all, as you consider this, you look at those studies and look at the experience of residential streets in Los Gatos.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Thank you.
Sure. And then, and then, and then the lady in back, sure.
Thanks, Ryan Giordano. My wife obviously spoke. I think one perspective that's really interesting and different. Bruce has really two sides of the street, right? We have the side closest to Dave's Avenue, where you come on Poppy, you take a left. There's a stop sign, and then you can go down towards Los Gatos, or you're coming up. The residents, particularly on our side of Poppy, which is closest to the stop sign, really have the strongest observations around this, because what happens is parents are either going to school, and they'll speed up, kind of roll through the stop sign and go right, or they're leaving school. Everyone's trying to get to work, get to their calls, whatever the case may be. They're cruising through that stop sign and accelerating right by our house. So, I think that a lot of the importance around what we're looking at is also placement on Bruce. What we've learned is some folks that are not for it are further down towards Los Gatos, whereas the people on our side, that's all Montesereno, right, but on our half of Bruce, I would say, have really noticed this issue. And so, I think that that might be a difference. And honestly, I'd really love to hear reasons against. The one that we've heard so far is because someone drives a low-profile car that doesn't want to deal with it in terms of going over. I drive a low-profile sports car. There's a guy up the street that drives a Ferrari. We're both good with it. I think we can go slow enough to not damage a car. I'd prefer my kids not be hit. So, that's what I wanted to answer.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Louise Kirkbride, and I'm at one seven seven oh five Bruce Avenue. We've been there since nineteen ninety. We don't see a speeding problem, and I think you may be right. It's the other end of the street. The problem we have is that the plan is to put a speed bump right in front of our house. If there's a speed bump needed at a place where people are speeding, that's fine with us, but it where people are speeding. But I, I, we, my husband and I, probably pretty obviously, are both retired. We spend most of our time in the house. We really don't want to hear bump, 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 bump all day long. There are trucks on that street constantly for deliveries. And it's going to be very noisy having that speed bump there. So, it seems to me there are alternatives. One is put a couple of speed bumps at the other end where the problem is, or do something like is done on Winchester, where there's, you know, a flashing light and a sign that tells people to slow down and shows what their speed is. Or perhaps go as far as putting a speed, a traffic, you know, detector up that will write, write a, you know, tell people it's going to write a ticket. But to put a speed bump where there isn't a speed problem that only creates noise for us, and it's right between us and the Hanes, I just talked to them today, they're completely against this too, seems to be to be solving a problem the wrong way. And again, we've been here since nineteen ninety, so.
Over your address again.
One seven seven oh five.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's the one I, we're trying to confirm the address. It was the one. Yes, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Suzanne Nestor, and I live at one seven seven six one Bruce Avenue. I live right across the street from the Giordanos. I've been in that house for fourteen years now. I, I can tell you without any doubt, there is a speed problem. While it might not be at the very start of Bruce Avenue near where Winchester is, it most certainly is as you go up to the various stop signs, because people do speed up that. And while I can certainly appreciate that maybe the noise is a problem, I think that children being maimed or killed is a more, far more significant issue than a little bit of noise from cars going over a speed bump. I can also appreciate not wanting it right in front of your driveway, and I think that's something that can be easily accommodated. But five years ago, when the vote came up, the way the vote was done is that y'all sent a letter to people in the community, and you relied on people to actually respond to that, and you didn't get a hundred percent response. So, it wasn't really an accurate survey of the residents of the street to determine whether or not the majority were in fact in favor of it. Excuse me, and from, from our discussions from the neighborhood, they were majority in favor. It's just that most people don't respond to those things. So, I think that was a huge problem, and the discussion was at the time that, that you all would do a temporary study. So, as was, David was speaking about is, that was the resolution that we were left with, was that there was going to be a temporary speed bump study done to see if in fact it did calm traffic, and that never happened. Part of the reason that we wanted it done back then with the temporary measure was because there was supposedly a plan to repave our streets, and so we wanted the issue resolved before the streets got paved in order to preserve finances for the, for the community, so that they didn't waste money paving the street and then have to repave it when they added speed bumps later. So, there are economic reasons to get it done now versus later. There are health and safety reasons for the children of our community. My son plays in the street. He rides his scooter all the time. You know, my daughter walks up and down the street to go meet friends. I don't want my children getting hit by a car that can't be bothered to slow down. And I tell you, there is, on the daily, I have to scream at people to slow down and stop at the stop sign. And there's one car in particular that I see every single, every single morning when I walk my dogs. He speeds right through the stop sign with his three children in his car and goes zooms into the parking lot over by Dave's to drop them at the clubhouse. And I see that same, that car every day do the same exact thing. And I've seen this month after month after month, for the fourteen years that I've been there. So, I, again, I can appreciate people don't want more noise, but I want children safe, and that needs to be the priority for the street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments at this time?
Yes. And I'm sorry, because everybody's probably going against me, but I'm other side. So, I'm at, my name is Donna Lou, and we live at one seven seven three one Bruce Avenue, and we've been there for, we owned there for twenty years. I have three children. I have one that goes to West Valley College, and two are in the high school now. But all my kids went to Dave's Avenue, and I am concerned there is a traffic problem. It is a lot of traffic that goes through, and there are at times people who do speak to the neighborhood. I'm not saying that, you know, it, it, there may be close calls that occur, and they have, there have been close calls when my kids were little as well. But I don't necessarily, I'm not for speed humps on our road. Right now, I bring my son to West Valley College. Every day, I go over all the Dave's Avenue speed bumps. Today, today, the road was closed at the end. I had to go on Austin Way, two more speed bumps there. Go down, go through Allen, Allendale, there's two more speed bumps there. Every day, I go over twenty-some odd speed bumps, and I'm just tired myself of going over speed bumps. Now, with those speed bumps, I know you have to slow down to fifteen miles an hour. Our road is considered twenty-five miles an hour. So, if that is already over the speed limit, I, I don't know. Are we adjusting down to twenty miles an hour by our speed? You know, should we adjust that versus adjusting down to fifteen miles an hour? Because it will be fifteen miles an hour if we put in three, I don't know, the two or three speed bumps will be put in. I, I just think that there may be other opportunities for us. I know that this has been brought up before, and it did not succeed, but yet I think that, at this point, I would like to see that the road be refinished, resurfaced, put the drainage in, deal with all the potholes. The potholes don't stop anybody, but I don't know whether the speed bumps will either. As I go down Dave's Avenue, I see all the cars going around the speed homes and going into the pedestrian area to go around them, and I see that every day, because I go through there four times a day, at least, or maybe eight times if I have to go softball. So, anyway, I've seen it. They go around, and pedestrians are there. It's very unsafe. I don't want, here's our, we have two speed limit signs on our road. One is hidden behind this big tree, and no one can see it. It's been like that for years, though. So, the sign is back there. Nobody's ever trimmed. They've got construction at the house. It's just, I don't know why it's not turned back.
And I have those.
Sure. But anyway, you can see it's hidden somewhere right in right here, twenty-five. There's your twenty-five mile an hour. And then the other one going the other direction is visible, and it's close to their house. So, that one, there's those two, and that's it. Along Bruce Avenue, there are other signage issues that are a problem as well, where there's a school crossing or a school.
That's probably here.
That's probably, that's not Bruce?
Yes. I agree, but I'm just. And then I do want to say that I have put on, I don't know whether you have any more of these. We are timed up. If we have any more of these, that would be great. I would suggest going with, you know, redoing our road before we go ahead and put speed bumps and speed bumps and drainage. Lot of issues already.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Can I just make one point of correction? The speed limit on our street is twenty, not twenty-five.
Correct.
So, we don't want to have things that say drive twenty-five, because we don't want people driving twenty-five. We want them driving twenty or under.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Twenty. I do say twenty. All right. Any, any other comment on, anyone online wanting to, wishing to speak? No hands are raised. Okay, then I will close public comment and return it to the commission. Any, any questions or comments?
A little bit of history. My recollection, we didn't get a hundred percent vote, but Jessica, the city engineer at the time, did knock on every door and made a very vigilant effort to get everyone to participate. And I believe, and that, the plan was to initially put in temporary speed bumps at that time, primarily because the road was going to be redone. We wanted to see where the ideal location would be. But that was, that didn't happen because we didn't hit the threshold for two-thirds that are needed for something like that.
Was a super majority, the two-thirds required of anyone who expressed an opinion, or of all of the whole?
It was mailed to everybody on the street.
Yeah, this letter in the back of my pack, everyone.
Does that have a question?
So, I'm sorry, I've closed public comment. Do I, should I reopen it?
If you reopen it, we have to just allow it, everybody again, if they want to comment. No, we just want to, well, they're here, so let's, we'll reopen it. We'll just take two more comments.
Just, just a quick question, actually. What was the defined voting area back then for that vote? Because my understanding was that it wasn't just Bruce Avenue. I, I heard about people voting on Dave's Avenue or Cavan. There were people on Cavan voting on this idea of temporary speed humps on Bruce. So, what is, what is the voting precinct for this issue?
My recollection was, it was Bruce only.
Well, that's not what I remember.
All right, any other, Donna? You have a question?
I have the letter that came out. It said the city received responses from eighty-eight percent of the affected residents. Two notices were sent to property, did not respond, and the city staff visited those properties. Though everyone had more than ample opportunities to express their views on this, and it did not get the two-thirds majority that had, that was required for this.
Okay, thank you very much. I will now close public comment again and return it to commission. Question, do you have another? I wanted to ask, so, so Bruce is not all Montesereno?
Correct.
Right, so, was every resident on Bruce polled on this, or was it just the Montesereno residents? And I know we have to work with Los Gatos on this, and that can get quite sticky.
Typically, shared person, my experience of doing this problem for thirty years, is we would just only go into the jurisdiction that we're allowed to put improvements in, so we would not pass that border into Los Gatos, because we really have no jurisdiction, spend any money in regards to their wishes, so.
And is that border at this time?
It's right the, the frontage of, as you come off of the main street.
Off of Winchester.
Stop sign to stop. From Winchester to the stop sign is Los Gatos, technically.
And then from stop sign to stop.
And then the next stop sign after, actually, there's three houses, but they're kind of weirdly placed, are still Montesereno, and then past that is Los Gatos. So, there's kind of a smattering of Montesereno versus Los Gatos, but if Los Gatos placed the last speed thing that was there a week ago, and we've had an extreme Los Gatos PD presence in our neighborhood, I, I'm curious as to how that got there, if Los Gatos put it there.
Anybody can call the PD and have.
So, um, okay, so to follow up with that, so we only polled Montesereno residents on Bruce Avenue. Jessica, did you recall?
That is my recollection, yes.
Okay. My second question is, what conditions must exist in order to override a less than two-thirds majority? Is there anything like that?
There, there is no provision unless, in my case, with my license with the state of California, I come to a conclusion that there is a, a direct health issue that I would have to intervene on, and I would have to put the council, tell them that would be my professional opinion, and they would have to allow me to do that, if I came to that conclusion.
Okay.
But that's the only way that I think we could overcome that, because this is a policy, adopted policy.
Okay. Is there parking allowed Bruce all day? Are cars parked all day, right? So, visibility is low.
It can be, yes.
How is this not a health issue? If it's a.
For, for the policy, if we go back and we do another speed study and find that it's above the twenty miles an hour, or whatever the speed zone limit is there in the eighty-five percentile, then that triggers that we have a speeding safety issue. And that puts us into the motion to follow, like we did the last time, get the polling of everybody on that street that fronts that from Montesereno, get that information and bring it back, and move forward if it, if it passes this time. Or if it doesn't, then we wouldn't.
Okay, so the, the returning in other conditions triggered this.
Yes, I mean, it's, yeah. With this information, definitely, we definitely have an interest in looking into this once again. By policy, we can. It's, it's expired since the last decline, so we can do this, go through this game.
Okay.
How do we determine which residence is to poll?
We, we have, by the APM, that's the city, who is in the city, who's not in the city, so we have all those addresses.
We were pulling the, the affected neighborhood.
Correct.
And is it just residences that are on Bruce or really inside streets?
Just, just the ones on Bruce are the ones I would poll this round. That's how I've done it over the last few decades, so.
Okay, and so if the last time, we simply didn't do it because we didn't hit the sixty-seven percent, it, it appears that there is more support this time around, so.
It may be, yes.
I mean, is, is there any other qualification that needs to be met that doesn't appear like the, other than the, the poll?
I don't believe so, Commissioner. Once we have a safety issue that's brought to, to, to myself as the city engineer, then I must act on that one way or the other. Seek your guidance on what you think, that this is a issue that we want to pursue, and if so, then we take it before the council, but.
And then what input would the neighbors have on the placement, the, you know, the exact configuration, the size of the speed humps?
That's a great question. We would go, I would go back out to the neighborhood, and we would talk about placement with everybody if this were to pass before we put any of them down, because some people may not be able to place them in a, in a area right in front of their residence. Maybe there's wheelchair issues, maybe there's some other issues that we'd have to look at. As far as the design, we would go with the fire department standard design with the flat hump, so that their large fire race can go over that and not mess with the chassis and that. There's a, there's a certain type of hump design that they've approved already. We would go with that.
Okay, and then, well, last question, sorry. That's many. Is, what other traffic calming ideas or things are that we could do?
There, there are feedback signs, which one of the residents brought it tonight. It flashes the speed when you go over a certain speed limit. And that's good for people who are actually trying to follow this, follow the law. Those people who respect what the, the speed is, that, that's good for us. But those who really don't care what the speed is, those, they do not deter those. So, it's good for most of the people who are trying to, oh, you know, I should slow down, like me or you perhaps. But those who are fast trying to get somebody there, and they're not going to wait a lot anyway, it doesn't deter those people, which sounds like those are a lot of the people that they're talking about, too, so.
I have a comment that's fairly relevant to your question, though. At the time that we looked at speed bumps, two members of this commission spent a lot of time out there, and their main concern was kids crossing at Poppy. That, because they come, they come through that intersection, that they come from, you know, up in this area down Rose, for example, and there were some very specific proposals of bulb outs and things to calm traffic right at that intersection, and those were intended to be put in place when we repaved Bruce. And so, hopefully, those plans exist somewhere, and whether or not we have speed humps, those will make a difference.
I have one.
Yes.
Another question. So, the speed humps that we installed on Dave's, and this is relevant to this incident. Have there been any noise complaints?
We have a hundred percent approval from all the neighbors on the ones on Dave's, who are directly in front of those bumps. No complaints at all on the noise, but a hundred percent positive feedback from everybody on it after we installed those.
Okay, great. So, I think that answers the noise question. And I think I agree with you. I think, you know, we, we know there's that, that project out there, and it came back with a very hefty price tag.
Right.
So, it would be ideal if we could make the most of, you know, do something at this time.
Agreed, and that's a check. Who brings up another good idea about traffic calming, where you bulge out the corners, you squeeze them together, and it makes it harder to squeeze through visually, but will slow people down typically, and reduce speeds.
Okay. Any other comments? So, I think the next steps are, you will.
Yeah, what, what direction are you getting from?
Any direction from this committee? Are you in favor of pursuing this and looking further into following our policy?
I am absolutely in favor of doing this.
Okay, we will move forward on this project and return you with the results. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you for your input.
All right, going back to item number one, approve the minutes from the April eleven to twenty twenty-four Better Streets Commission meeting. We have uh, any questions regarding the minutes? Is there any member of the public wishing to speak on the minute?
Minutes of the last meeting. Keep it coming, I'll say.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Moving on to item number two, pedestrian bicycle connectivity citywide.
Great, thank you, um it was brought to my attention, um. Not just the ones, but um recently that uh we have some issues about connectivity through our community. Especially if kids trying to get to school through certain parts um of the city. And I, you put up a couple APN sheets that I had with this tonight. Um a little bit of background, as you all know, City of Montesereno is a mostly hillside community with numerous streets that end in cul-de-sacs, enter dead ends. As a result of our geography and hillside buildout, there is limited connectivity to important destinations, predominantly to our only school within city limits. Certain regions of the city do not have an interior road network to allow school age students to bike or walk to school without routing to more dangerous routes such as Highway Nine. With high-speed vehicles and intermittent sidewalks. Okay, let's do, how about the other one? Right here, as you can see behind me, I pulled out some APNs for you to look at. Um lot number twenty-two, the long lot from top to bottom here. We're right here, city hall's right here, just down the street is lot twenty-two. There is a house on that now, but there's a large area that stretches from Rose Avenue all the way up to Viewfield. And just by, if you go back on the previous APN, please, please. Here's where, yeah, here's where that lot dead ends, right here, at this corner, right here, it comes up right here. So um we were looking at that as a possibility in the future to perhaps. Provide a pedestrian access bike path of some type needed. Um of course, we have not engaged the, the owner of that lot as of yet. Um but it's something that if this committee deems as something reasonable, we should look into. I can speak with our planning manager, and we can put that, we can make a note on that when that lot comes up for development to talk to that. Person and or before, we want to be more proactive. And estimate they would be willing to work with the city on some type of an access issue there, so we can get the people from that northwest side of town. Down here through Rose, back into a uh, a street where they can get to downtown much easier. So that's one option that we're looking at tonight, would like your input on. The other area of town, which I don't think I write any APNs for, is where we have the horse trails. On the north side of town, off of Bignell. The thought was brought up that perhaps we should maybe engage the residents and or the owners of those areas there to see if they would. Be willing to share any of the um. Uh access roads or trails that run through that development and allow pedestrians or, or bicyclists to route through there. To get to that part of town, which is another congested area, which people have a hard time navigating, so. Those two ideas were brought up to me, um being new to the community about a year and a half, not that familiar with those areas, however. Um I would appreciate this committee's input on what we can do there, those ideas, different ideas, or. Um maybe priorities of how we can pursue providing more connectivity through the community.
All right, thank you, thank you for putting us on the agenda. Does anybody have any questions? Who would like to start?
Oh, I've got some input, um I think that the horse trails. Is a very highly charged issue, and while I am in the Bignell area. I, I don't think that it would make sense to pursue it unless and until the owners of the property. Were asking the city for something.
Okay.
Um I, I think the, it's just going to make people unhappy. For the Bignell area, the, the uh better option is probably. For the city to be watching, there's like three properties uh on Via Lamina. That uh if the properties were ever sold. Or were for sale, the city could theoretically offer uh two hundred thousand dollars for a ten-foot easement. Along the length of the property, and it would be maybe a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty feet long.
Okay.
And that would provide an easy path, because there, there's sixty to seventy homes in my area that are part of Montesereno. That have no pedestrian access to the rest of Montesereno. So I, I, I think that's probably the better solution, I think the, the horse trails are. I mean, you probably know.
Yeah, there, I, I don't think that they would potentially want.
I think it'd be very.
Dassins or bicy- bicyclists spooking the horses, I think that's a, they're their own entity, um. So, yes, but I, I do like the idea of your approach of watching. For sales, any other questions before I open it to public comment?
All right, well, I don't have a question. I think, I think that lot twenty-two is a good idea, but I think that's going to be a controversial lot. And it is the largest lot in Montesereno, um and has some potential for, should housing become an issue with your town? But that'll make it easy.
That's the easement issue, right?
Yeah.
How much, I mean, I know it's a process to get an easement, I'm sure it takes a lot of time and it costs money.
Prepared one to take.
Huh?
Prepared one to take.
Would it be more beneficial to approach the current owner with an easement opportunity? Versus waiting for a developer to come in and purchase the property, because then the easement is already, would have already been established.
True.
My, my gut feeling is, anytime there's a multi-unit development, which is still a multi-unit development. Is the city can request all sorts of things, and that's the appropriate time, they're probably going to have a road going all the way through there anyways. So I, 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 and I, this is kind of related to the last item on our agenda, in that the city does not do a good job. Of monitoring developments for potential to improve bicycle and pedestrian access, we need a better mechanism in place to do that. And we need to be on, on top of it when um that, the Rose, Rose property uh gets redeveloped, which, which will happen.
I'm sorry, did you see any harm in approaching that lot owner now?
Well, isn't it a little old lady, I feel guilty about it myself, and.
She might, she might be real to have little kids riding bikes through by her house.
But it's, it's only going to be a few years before it gets redeveloped, almost for sure.
Well, I, I, I think it's worthwhile to approach her and say there's some interest in, in merging these two parts of the city, and she's the obvious solution to them.
Right.
Or her models.
Well, I'm going to open it to public comment, and then I'll bring it back. So is there any, any member of the public wishing to speak on this item? No hands raised, all right, I will close public comment. Now, back to discussion. Have to follow the rules, um I, I, I agree with you, I think, I think it doesn't hurt. And, and if we can get something like that in place, then it, you know, it'll take time to develop, but at least we're, we're making strides towards. You know, safer up to school, et cetera.
And worst case scenario, when she goes and sell it, she, we've already planted the seed, and it should have come up, she would be aware of it. This issue arose.
Yeah.
I, I think that it's important for these types of things, toward I was suggesting for the properties on Via Lamina or for this, to get ahead of it. Because if the opportunity arises, and then it has to go to the city council for the first time at that time, that's a long process. And so you need to lay the groundwork, set the stage, you know, and I think that, that something can be done, and I think you're right that. You're right also, that there's likely to be a road that's put through it, especially if you could put four or five properties that's hundred feet long. And so that would be ideal. Yeah, I, I would encourage us to reach out into Via, Lamina, a lot of owners as well. Start planning the seed, and particularly now that we're around budget time for the city council, if there's any interest, this is the time. I think it's, it's more likely to be appropriate one, there's a property for sale, which is why it would help to have something set up, like a budget set up. Or one that's publicly on for sale, because then you can entice a potential buyer with, here's, you know, three hundred thousand dollars. And all you have to do is provide a seven-foot easement. Um and will allow you not to, to have, you need the, or setbacks.
So you would allocate money in the budget in advance without answer to whether or not.
Yes, I think, I, I think that we can do that, I think you can.
I think it'll be free, we can do it for free when it gets redeveloped.
I know, these, these homes aren't likely to be redeveloped, likely to be sold every seven to ten years.
Well, I guess I was speaking to the Rose lot.
Oh, yes, yes, I think, I think you're right about the Rose.
Well, I think we're all agreeing to.
Yeah.
Approach them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, and I, I, and I think you're absolutely right, and, and is there, is there a mechanism? Is there a way that we can monitor these homes for sale and alert city council that this is something that we are hoping to accomplish, at least study? And keep track of.
I think we should tag a few of these with, between my department planning till when these come up, or if they're for sale. That we've already looked at these, we've looked at the potential, who has the side yards, who could even accommodate a seven-foot, who does not have those side yards, so we're prepared. Um now, with lot twenty-two come to develop, they have to come to my department for conditions, and I would condition an access on top and bottom of that. Lot, lot that's so big, so it will have access at both ends eventually when it does develop.
Right.
So.
So that may be the, the main focus first.
Yeah, but I think it's a great way to get on, get ahead of things and maybe um discuss this with property owner. Whether we, we named a path after her family or whatever that could be, you know, to accommodate that, and see if that person is amicable to maybe.
Do you think the three hundred thousand dollars and change that council allocates for Better Streets Commission? Would be something that could be used for this, given it's.
They're having a hard time spending a hundred dollars right now, two hundred thousand, I'm not sure they're going to want to entertain at the moment, but.
Well, that's usually budgeted for our, our big pavement projects, right?
Right, I doubt they would reallocate the pavement rehabilitation.
Money for something like this.
Or something like that, however.
Stranger things have happened.
Yeah, and I like the idea, perhaps maybe bringing it up to, as, as I update the council, and what we've been discussing is talking about this now, so they're hearing.
Yes.
It's, it's in their head that we're talking about, in case some of these properties do come up for sale. We've been here, we've talked about it, we're waiting to pull the trigger or something like that happens, so it's not a surprise for them when, when something goes up for sale.
Okay, sounds great.
I have another comment, just that this list, I brought this up when we worked on the, on the bicycle and pedestrian master plan.
Yes, thank you.
And this list should be, uh I believe El Rancho, which just has a fence separating a huge neighborhood. From uh university and the Sona Park.
Yes, that was already noted on the plan, that's right, yeah.
But should be, I mean, it's, it's the same category as this, I think.
University, Marser?
It's, it's, the road is El Rancho, and it, and it connects uh Winchester, and it goes right up to university. But there's a fence, because it's owned by a condo association, and so you can't walk through.
Gotcha, yeah, and that, and that was noted on the plan before, yeah, okay. All right, you have direction?
Thank you for your input.
All right.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, moving on, let's see.
Oh.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
That, that big easement between Viewfield and um. Grandview, do you happen to know who owns that? It's huge, I don't know, but we looked that up.
Which one? I know it's a fire access road.
Yeah.
Oh, that little road, yeah, that's a, that's a fire road.
That's a fire road.
Yeah, I mean, it's really wide, but there's a gate, but you can walk.
Well, the gate on both sides, right?
Yeah, but you can walk through it.
Yeah, that's, that's a public easement, if not a road, so we probably don't have to.
All right, moving on to our final um topic tonight, the Better Streets Commission confession. Um to discuss the future role of our commission.
Okay, thank you, this is actually triggered by mine and Royce's previous boss, who no longer live in the city. But we felt we should go ahead and bring this forward, even though he's no longer here, um and the, the topic was brought up that. I'm told, and maybe Barry, you could have a little more input on this, you've been there much longer and been involved much longer. That the Better Streets Commission has accomplished a lot of their, their goals, it helped us develop a, a street rehabilitation program that didn't exist at one point. Our streets were in bad, bad shape, I am told. Um but you guys helped orchestrate this annual pavement project that this, that the council has now sanctioned us every year, we input in three hundred thousand dollars to, to do these streets. Um you've also helped push forward a, a program where we actually evaluate and. Monitor the um, the PCI of each one of our streets on an annual basis, and report that to our county and state. That's monumental, me being from much larger jurisdictions than this, from where I worked at before that, we all had those. And it's amazing that that's only been present here for what, three, four years now, is that right, Barry?
That sounds right.
Yeah, so um and that's instrumental in us getting the money that we need to put into the street program that comes from the state and the county um coffers, so that's fantastic. We've been able to do that as well, the original, I, I added the um ordinance in here since I was here when this was adopted. We had a chance to review the original ordinance, gosh, who was updated on that, two thousand seventeen, that's been what, seven years? Um and we looked at the main purpose at this at that time, or one of the main purposes was to advise, here we are. Eight zero six zero fifty, commission duties and responsibilities, the commission shall advise the city manager on the design operations and. Through all the things that you guys have done, a good job over the last seven years doing, at that time. We did not have a full-time city engineer or public books director, I think we had a part-time.
Contractor.
Contractor at that time, so basically you were acting as our city engineering um direction. Advising the city manager at that time, what's best for all these different types of infrastructure issues throughout the city. And um I think you guys have done a great job on that, talking with the previous city manager, he said, well, is it, is it time that we look at, do we still? Um follow the same procedures that we set up in the beginning, quarterly meetings, do we still need to have quarterly meetings, should we have semi-annual meetings? Um is there a time where we phase this out now that we do have full-time staff taking care of most of these duties that are described here? Responsibilities that this, that's phased out, you know, it's in the future time, I don't know, um but uh. Number one, I want to applaud this, this group and the previous groups who put this program together, I think they've done a fantastic job. But um number two is the, just to ask tonight some direction of what, what are your thoughts as a group, as a committee? Is this something that um we still want to continue on a quarterly basis? Is it something that we need to phase out eventually over time? Is it so important, we just need to keep what we have now? For other issues that come up like tonight, speed bumps and what have you, but the. This topic was brought up, so I thought I'd bring it before the committee, so we can get your input on your thoughts.
Thank you, I might open a developer comment now, so that we can have it, okay. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak on this item? Is it closed? Uh no, returning to council, uh commission. Uh I guess I'll start, although you've been on the commission longer than I have. I was, I live on Blanchard, and it was our street that, it was our neighbor who I felt that lobbied the city because of the potholes on our street. Which precluded the creation of the Better Streets Commission. So it's been a great six years, and we did, we, the, the original idea was to come out and identify the streets that were in terrible condition. And bring them up to a, a good PCI, so that um for the years in the future, maintenance is inexpensive. Like, you know, we're saving the city money in the long term, even though we have a big financial output for the first five or six years. And I believe we have accomplished most of the major projects, other than Poppy Bruce. I think is the last remaining one, and that came in at such a high price tag. And so I guess for me, I'm wondering, we, we haven't had a lot of agenda items, uh wondering. What do you guys think this looks like, I mean, in the future? What kind, what would you like to see us be doing in the future? Where do you see this going? Uh we, we do have this pedestrian product, project that we're thinking of, so I'd like to see something get, you know, done about that. Um but what, what are your thoughts? You, you've been here for a long time, so.
Well, I mean, we actually, um, I'd have to think hard about what we were doing, but we had full meetings every other, every other month.
Yeah.
It wasn't quarterly. Um, of course, one big thing was putting this, um, the policy in place, also the fantastic group that we're following. Um, another thing, we, that I, well, I wrote down the the multi-unit development. Somebody needs to stay on top of that. If we don't do it, somebody, somebody does. And that hadn't been happening before. It didn't happen on the big project in Highway nine, for example.
Okay.
We, there, we get ten, the city gets ten thousand dollars a year, measure B encouragement and educational funds for bicycle pedestrians. Um, we had, this committee had been deciding what to do with that money. I don't know what, I haven't heard anything about it in a while. Um, I don't know what's going on there.
In the past, we're working with the Safe Routes to School Committee with Los Gatos and others.
I mean, that was the decision of this committee.
It's still going to them there.
That's it. That should probably be reviewed and we should we should, somebody needs to know what exactly they're doing with that money, so we can decide if we're happy with that or not.
Gotcha.
Just one cautionary thing is MTC, uh, I think it's the Municipal Transportation Commission, the the body that oversees the whole Bay Area, they require any grants, which we never get grants. Every other jurisdiction, bigger jurisdictions get a lot of grants. They have to be reviewed by a local bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. So that's something to keep in mind if we're ever like sharing a grant with Los Gatos. I mean, the the council could act probably as a, as a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, but that's just something to consider, that that's a requirement.
That's a great point, where we've, we've looked at several transportation grants that came out, but we really don't have a transportation facility, bus stops or any other things that qualify.
So, and those are just things that I want, I'm sure happened.
Sure.
Um, whether we do it or somebody else does it.
They said that the commission dues responsibilities shall advise the city manager on the design operations and maintenance. To the extent that design it means improve, I I think that, uh, this commission has a purpose. And and that is to always look at ways that we can improve things. And honestly, to be a little bug or annoyance from the city councils here to just remind them that we need to, we need to pay attention to this, we need to try to improve this or that. And I think there are a lot of things that aren't the big thing, that improving the streets was the biggest thing. But there are little things. I think that to make Montesrina more friendly to pedestrians, we should have benches. We're an older population. We should encourage walking, you know, and and every now and then I hear people complaining about dog waste. Would it be so bad to place a few trash cans, make small openings, so that a lot of views throughout the city?
And bags.
Yeah, uh, things that make it more pedestrian friendly. Um, so they said the design means uh, improve. I I I think that there is a purpose for this committee. Then that's just pedestrian, but there's also bicyclists and and traffic calming, the other things that, uh, always are going to be complained about and need to be looked at.
Okay.
Good. I'm referring to all of you. This is perhaps my second or third meeting. It would be kind of rude for me to even speak on this, but anyway. I I I like what you guys said.
Yeah, I mean, I I would say like the bulk of the, the big bulk of work has been accomplished, but there's still more. We can be an idea hub and, you know, like focus purely on the streets and making them better. But it it takes a lot of resources of the city to hold these meetings, so maybe we don't have them as often as we do. Maybe I like the suggestion of semi-annual or in maybe or quarterly, no more than quarterly, because I think we've only had, how many meetings this year? Three? Yeah, so we're already, I mean, at quarterly, perhaps semi-annual, so then we could have more things to discuss on our agenda. And if something does come up, we could always call a special meeting. Um, that would save city resources.
Sure.
Um, and then maybe a sunset clause, you know, like maybe there could be a period of time where it, the council has to review how we outlived our our usefulness, you know, what what are the next steps? So maybe that's something that we can consider so that it's not just, you know, we we plan for it. We plan our obsolescence.
But remember, every other jurisdiction has one of these.
Right, right.
Only because we're small, we get away with not doing it.
Right, right. So, so yeah, so the idea of maybe just, and see what, and see what council has.
I would agree with the city attorney too.
But we were created by the, the council, requested the agreement, they said the council said anything on this issue?
They have not. Um, but like I said, the feedback I've got is you guys accomplished a lot in a short period of time. And it's almost like, well, they've done, I feel like they've done such a good job, you're almost invisible on to some of them because you tackle the big issues that they're being taken care of. But if there's something that we can focus on the staff, whether it's benches or something that we need to refocus, because we've got, we've got your I've got your street payment issued down. We got the money coming, it's planned out every year, it's in a report. Uh, but if there's something else that we can focus on that this group says, you know, we've got to tackle this, we're just not doing that, then that will help me with my limited staff, which is me, what I can focus on for you guys to try to accomplish, so.
And I think that's the connectivity piece.
Yeah, that's great. And I think that's a great move, so.
Okay. All right then, you have directions?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you very much.
How, so how will we make a decision on if we do it to semi-annual?
Oh, well, I mean.
Do we need to put that on?
I suppose we do need to put that on agenda.
Okay.
Uh, let's agendaize. So I believe you might have, uh, the city council, so we we still have a meeting scheduled for December.
Okay.
Um, at this point, we do have, I believe I've emailed folks regarding seats that are going to be opening up.
Okay.
We do have applications.
Okay.
We actually, I think we have what, two seats available or that are opening, we have three applications. So this will be taken to council at the November nineteenth meeting. So I think it's still ideal that we have scheduled a meeting in the month of December. We'll finish this year and starting to kind of move forward. That way, if there's anybody new or if just the remaining people are still going, you know, forth and you guys can continue on with whatever direction you guys want to move.
Okay. So Liz, how can we make a request from the city council? Do we have to have a resolution or?
Well, I think, I think after this discussion, Daryl can bring it to council.
Because I think the council needs to amend the charter of this commission.
Yeah, he mentioned he would need to talk to city attorney first, right?
Because it, because it's basically called down, meetings, they're less, uh, frequently, once every three months, so they would change it to the most frequent ones every six months.
Right.
So they would have to agendaize that themselves.
That is correct. Do we want to do that after we meet December and you talk? Agendaize it here first in December, or do you want me to go ahead and take that forward to council and see if they will? Consider that now.
I would do that now.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they'll have that December meeting as an organizational meeting in front of them.
Great.
Yeah.
Rose could make us busy again too.
Yeah, which one of you wants to sponsor a speed home? About sixty-five hundred.
And how long do they last?
They last quite a long time, um, probably get twelve, fifteen years.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Um, any committee wish reports? Do you have anything from?
No, I went to the VJV impact meeting yesterday. There's nothing interesting or relevant to this committee.
Any, okay, future agenda items, I think we've covered that. Um, okay, so if we're, if we're all done, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, let's. Thank you.
Appreciate you. How are the Niners doing?